And before we start, councillor Garnett, just a couple of words he would like to say.
Yeah, I participated in the Green Team initiative on Saturday morning at Roberts Bay, pulled a bunch of ivy with some nice residents from Sydney, and there was a really good turnout, and we got a lot done. I want to thank the Green Team for coming to our community to help this. And also a special thanks out to Cliff Halliday, a member of our Parks Department, who volunteered his time on Saturday and did a lot of hard work, and most appreciative that our employees are out there doing a good job for the community. So, that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Garnett. I wish to acknowledge that we are gathering here on the territory of the Wasonic Nation. And so I'll call this meeting to order, and I need approval of the agenda, council.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion carried. Thank you. We have a presentation this evening... No, we don't have a... Are we doing a presentation? Yes, we are. Okay. For Parks and Infrastructure, the concept plans for the Resthaven, Rathdown, and Brether Parks. And Mr. Evan Peterson from Barefoot Planning will be here. Welcome, Mr. Peterson. Floor is yours.
Thank you, councillor Fallett. Nice to see you, new council, for the first time. Hopefully not the last time, but we shall see how I do. So as you know, just going to talk through the concept plans for Rathdown, Resthaven, and Breathour. I trust that you've had a look, so I'll try to hit the highlights, and if you want me to come back and talk about anything in detail, then I'll be happy to do so. So the project team was myself, along with Paul DeGrief of Murdoch DeGrief Landscape Architecture. The lion's share of the work was mine. He provided sort of the expert content analysis and advice throughout, sort of the site analysis, the initial draft plans, some into the final plan, and the costing of the amenities that you find in the package. So I'm just going to go through scope and rationale, process, and consultation outcomes, try to hit those fairly quickly, then focus on the three plans themselves, some key considerations, which are kind of the discussion points that might come up, and then just go through the implementation section, or at least show it up there for a little bit, and then I'll be happy to answer questions. So the rationale behind these plans is really came from the Parks Master Plan, which Barefoot was also the lead on. Three of the key recommendations were to develop dedicated park plans for these three parks. And really, the objective of the project itself was to provide strong planning and design recommendation, and implementation plan for each park, so that detailed design and construction could happen over time. So we started by digging a little deeper in terms of a site analysis for each park. Through the Parks Master Plan, we looked at all Sydney parks, but mostly from a high level, looking at key upgrades necessary, just, yeah, sort of a high-level assessment, and looked at sort of the background research, context research a little bit. And then to come in with something for the community to react to, we started by developing some initial mock-ups of plans with two options for each park, showing different amenities, so that people could respond to the amenities themselves, as well as the overall plans, and rather than just starting from a blank slate. So we had a pop-up event at each park, followed by a digital survey, turned that feedback around into a draft plan for each park, which we had an open house for, again, another survey, and then the final plan, and now today. And then throughout there, we engaged with park staff, engineering, planning. So there's an iterative process, sort of as usual with your excellent staff. So outcomes of the engagement, for Rathdown, some drainage issues in the middle of the park, a lack of all-ages playground equipment in the playground. So there's several, I think there's at least three, maybe even four, daycares within a stone's throw of that playground, but they actually can't use it because of the type of equipment that's there. So they have to go to further field playgrounds. The pathway network is aging, and also there's no paths in some places where there should be. And then there's concerns around off-leash dog use, which sort of informally uses off-leash dog park. Yeah, we'll get more on that. For Resthaven Park, the overwhelming issue that came up in the pop-up event was issues with livable boards and debris in the harbour and so on, which I guess technically isn't inside the park, but is certainly adjacent to it. Washroom hours, another kind of somewhat peripheral but not quite issue managed by the Harbour Authority, but hours are not particularly convenient for park users. Lack of response to the bird sanctuary and the naturehood and the design and management and so on of the park. And then again, aging path network and kind of overall lack of amenities, quality seating areas, or something to draw people into this, frankly, like feature waterfront park in terms of its location. Breathour, sort of completely different. I remember back in growing up, when I used to come out and play against Peninsula in soccer, I remember playing a few games here. It's not really used for soccer or ball anymore, a little bit for practice field or mini T-ball, that kind of thing. The irrigation doesn't work anymore, so it's very underutilized. Some issues with invasives in the parks and topping of the trees from the airport, they need to do it, but maybe could be done better. Lack of, I said play equipment in this slide, but really sort of a lack of amenities. Not that parks need to have amenities, but feels like there could be use for one here, so. So I'll go through the plans themselves, and again, try to hit the highlights, and happy to come back and review things. Before I do, I'll just point out that really these are three quite different parks and three quite different plans. So Rathdown is kind of what you would have expected when we talk about like a concept plan for each park. It's pretty straightforward. It'll probably have one or maybe two phases. Here's a design for the park. Here's how much it's going to cost. Go build it. Whereas Resthaven is very much like this multi-phase management combined with projects within the overall project, like daylighting the creek, getting funding for that, working with that, managing the harbours, lobbying senior levels of government, maybe trying to find some funding to do some shoreline improvement. So that's sort of more complex. And then Breathour, we have some direction here, but there's also decisions left for council to make because of the sort of relative indecision and not wanting to make decisions that didn't need to be made for the park, because you don't always have to do something. You can always wait and do things in the future. So here's Rathdown. I believe the laser pointer doesn't work on the screen, so I'll just start top right and move southwest, and just kind of a quick, a quick hit.
Did someone shut the blinds in the back there?
Actually, I'm going to start the opposite. I'm starting the bottom left. So the bottom left, sort of from here down, is sort of seen as like, I think I referred to it in the plan as like the southward hub area. Okay, so we're seeing that as a hub of amenities for the park. Right now, the playground is down in there, swing set, and the main sort of entry to the park. So we're seeing a sport court to kind of appeal to older, slightly older ages, or all ages really. A new feature playground. We see this as sort of a really ideal family-centric park in Sydney that's heavily used now and can be even more heavily used for locals in the future. A little loop bike path around the, or just path around the playground that kids can learn to ride their bike and so on. And then a more, where there is this existing green space, but a bit better taking care of green space, that in the future won't have off-leash dogs. So kids can run free without worrying about various issues that you find in off-leash dog areas. Some drainage improvements on the outside, and better defining it all with high-quality landscape. High, sorry. High-quality landscaping and new tree plantings. Then improved pathways, more again, tree plantings and some landscaping, some drainage improvements, all the way up to the northeast corner of the park, where there's sort of two titles here. The first is reserve, which means this may see something in the future. The second is having it as sort of an effective control off-leash dog area. So once these improvements happen, put the off-leash dog folks up in that corner, so that there is less conflict between the two areas, and so that the sort of open green space area stays a little more clean for people to use it. The key considerations are off-leash dogs. That was a big issue. It's very heavily used now with dog owners, somewhat illegitimate so in terms of off-leash use. So what we saw is sort of a step-by-step process, maybe in which first we bring in some effective control, which means you basically need to be in control of your dog, needs to be nearby, and if there's maybe children nearby or near the playground, they need to be on leash, you can depend on how you work your bylaw. So starting with that for the whole park, and then maybe allowing that only in the northeast corner of the park, once the amenities are in place, and presumably the park is maybe more heavily used, or at least you want to keep them more separated from those new uses or improved uses. And then long-term consideration, which I can't predict now, but potentially have moved that somewhere else, and talked about some options in the plan. Feature playground, we see, again, see this as the best spot in this part of Sydney for a feature playground, more so than Resthaven. And you see a lot of plantings here. They don't necessarily, that tree canopy, if it, once it gets to that size, is going to be quite high, so there's not going to be concerns about, you know, people hiding in the bushes or things like that. It's just to show that we're, just like you'll see in the urban forest strategy, trying to include, increase tree plantings in parks where we can. So here's Resthaven. There's going to be two slides, Resthaven Island and Resthaven. This is certainly the focus of, in terms of improvements. So moving from far left to right. The first is that parking lot there is actually part of the park, and I don't think most people know about it. It's not particularly well-used, and people have concerns about how much parking's on the street. Well, we actually have bonus parking right there, so is the tennis court for that matter. So clear sign, clear parking signage, is that sort of orange shape there. Daylighted creek feature, the large green area. Again, this would be something to pursue through funding, not through, you know, your capital funding directly from the town. Bank improvements all along the bank, a new all-ages nature playground with a more sort of natural element emphasis to be consistent with what the theme of the park, which is to try to be more consistent with the naturehood in Roberts Bay, should have said that. A seating area in the middle with a bit of an outlook over the water, some new benches along the path. Here are some interpretive signage to talk about the ecology and history of the park, First Nations history as well, some more native trees and urban habitat landscape through, sort of on the ridge there, on this side, not taken away from the ability to, you know, sit and enjoy the view, but enhancing some of those areas, leaving the one open green space, creating a bit of a, if you daylight the creek, using some of that material to create a berm along the road, not particularly high, but at least to help shelter the perception from the street. And then improving the gateway right off Resthaven with some, like a water fountain, proper gateway signage, improving the path and so on. Resthaven Island, the sort of main physical change would be replacing the gazebo with some improved landscaping and seating. There's issue with livable boards coming in and essentially abusing the use of the gazebo and leaving it in not the greatest shape. Also improving some of the seating on the outlook out on the point there, and then just monitoring the path for needs over time, and as well as the connecting path between Resthaven Island and Resthaven Park. There's some issues with the health of the trees and so on, so just looking at those, seeing where they need to either be replaced or potentially hazardous elements taken away, but left for habitat and so on. So again, the main considerations around livable boards and harbour cleanup, which is, again, with jurisdictional issues, is a little bit complicated. The other thing that comes into play here is this sort of working harbour versus the bird sanctuary. So we chose, I think correctly, to go consistent with the theme of sort of a nature-oriented park, but you still have to recognize that it's adjacent to what is a working harbour. So there is a bit of a conflict or contrast there, but I don't think it's, I don't think it can, it can't, I don't think it can't live together. I think it can live together, is what I'm trying to say. So Breathour is complicated. And the complication which you see in the plan is that the pickleball courts, we're recommending this as a place for pickleball courts. However, we're also recommending that council considers Green Glade as primary location for pickleball, and this would be Plan B, or potentially even Plan C, looking at Parkland Park, which is adjacent to Parkland School. That's not to say this isn't a good location for pickleball. I think it is. In terms of on Sydney parks, this is, I think, the best location, but I think Green Glade would be better if there was the ability to do that, because of the fact that there's already indoor pickleball located there, there's washrooms, there's parking, and so on. So that's, that's something that I, you know, it goes a little bit beyond the scope of this plan, so it left it as a decision to be made. The playground, I'm seeing as a longer-term thing, not like Rathdown where I think it's more pressing and going to be very heavily used. This is something to see over time. And then basically the rest of the plan is improving the, there's serious drainage issues along this side into those yards. So looking at improving that drainage, adding a bunch of new tree plantings to buffer the effects of that road and the airport, at least a little bit. Obviously, you're not going to change the noise from the airplanes, and that will also help with the drainage. Maintaining a large open space for what is essentially used as an off-leash dog area right now, so keeping that use there, and then, and just like at Rathdown, managing it over time. And then managing the invasives and improving the trails and all that in the forested area, which is a great asset, and are obviously recommending to keep that. So I already touched on the pickleball courts, and if the pickleball courts do not go in, then we still see this as a prime location for some alternative recreational amenity in the future, whether it's a bike skills park or something, but that wasn't, didn't have strong enough direction yet to make that recommendation now. So implementation, I'm not, this is too detailed to go through right now, but I just have it up here so we can review it. But I'll just go through the top, top five or six here. So Rathdown, coming up with a detailed design of that southwest hub area, as sort of the number-one higher priority, short-term plan. Starting to get going on the harbour management work, dealing with the gazebo on Resthaven Island, looking to work with the Harbour Authority to open those washrooms more at Resthaven, and then looking at amending the animal control by law to be more consistent with current uses, but also have the language in there so it can be enforced to, you know, avoid more, avoiding conflicts now and in the future as use becomes more heavy with any of those parks. And then making decisions about the pickleball courts, and then everything else kind of leads on from there, which I'm not going to go through right now. So that's it for now, and I'm happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peterson. Committee, any questions, comments?
Yeah, just for my benefit, you, all-ages playground. What makes an all-ages playground? I know the one that's currently there in Rathdown is ages five to 12. 12 seems high for that playground. Like four to six is probably the optimal use. And so I'm just wondering what you would be able to add to a playground to make it go up, and have older children use it, or add to it that the younger children would be capable of using. I mean, right now, my toddler uses it fine, but I suppose that's not what it's intended for.
I'm actually drawing a blank on the exact specifications that make it the difference, but it's to do with the access to basically lower-height things that they're going to fall from. So if you have play equipment that is lower down and easier to access essentially, based on the certification, then that quasi qualifies it for the toddler and up age. And then older ages, it doesn't matter. That's anybody, a 16-year-old can use any play equipment. But if we do want to encourage more sort of middle-school age, then certainly, you know, a feature playground that includes maybe, you know, some higher, more risk element, risk included elements, or some climbing walls, or some boulders, or things like that, then certainly you start getting the older kids more interested.
Councillor Garnett?
Thank you very much. I'm happy to see the recommendation of the off-leash dog park, because I went to the pop-up and the open house, and I live around the Breathour Park area, and that was one of the things that the people who live in the neighborhood were constantly saying that they wanted, so I'm glad to hear that. The pickleball thing came up as well. We do need pickleball courts, for sure. They've been waiting a long time. The people around there don't really want them, that live around, right around the park. And I think your suggestion of Green Glade is a good one, just based on what's available there with bathrooms and whatnot and parking. It's just, it makes a lot more sense. I wonder in terms of priority, not in terms of the intricacies of amenities and whatnot, but as far as the drainage issues in Breathour, because I know that's been a longstanding problem for the people who live on EPCO in their backyards, if, where is that falling in terms of priority, in terms of low, medium, and high? And if it's lower, can, is it possible to move it a little higher, in terms of getting it done a little quicker for them?
Yeah, the, sorry, I think I turned this off. So we have the, I think the Breathour, right now landscaping is quite far down, to be honest, and I think that could certainly be revisited. Part of the challenge is, is that we originally were thinking to see that as part of, you know, the pickleball and, and so that decision, there probably needs to be, I think this could be amended to include sort of a, an if-then situation with the drainage. So if the pickleball courts don't happen there, then do the drainage. If the pickleball courts do go there, then do the drainage as well, like, which was, I think, was the wording that's in the actual plan page as well. So I'll add a note here.
Councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you. First question about the playgrounds. Would those be accessible for children with disabilities as well?
Not specifically so, in terms of the recommendation. There are sort of like wheelchair-accessible playgrounds, which are radically different than sort of more conventional playgrounds, I guess, and that is not in the recommendation at this point.
So, not knowing much about playground construction, are there any elements that you could do to, to make it, to make it so, or some features, or?
Yeah, I think at this point, that's at a finer-grain detail of design than what I presented here. I think that'd be something to address when the actual details line comes through, because certainly you could include elements of that regardless. I think one element, at least at Rathdown that meets that, is the idea of having the little loop path around. You could essentially have maybe some elements of the park that have wheelchair accessibility. The challenge with accessibility is that, you know, the risk and fun associated with climbing up things and so on, someone gets eliminated by having it all ramp accessible and lower and so on. So it's often a bit of an either-or decision in terms of the, if you're going to include it throughout the playground, but certainly you could have elements. But that's beyond what we've proposed at this point, or the level of detail that we've addressed at this point.
Okay. So when we get to building the playground portion at some of these parks, would those take place at different times? I'm just wondering in terms of funding, whether we get better deals if we say, we're going to do three playgrounds, we, they can all be the same, and so whether in terms of procurement purposes, it's better and more cost-efficient to handle all the playgrounds sort of all at once?
Well, I'm not an expert in playground construction. I would say, you know, comparing it to other fields that I'm slightly more familiar with, yes, there would be some cost savings. However, you know, I guess we're, at this point, recommending slightly different approaches to the playground for each park. And so, you know, but the town could pursue that and check in to see what the cost savings were, and make a decision on their own in terms of, from operations level. That's, that would be my approach at least.
Okay. Yeah, that's good for me. Thanks. Any, councillor Duncan?
I don't know whether this will be a question for Mr. Peterson, or if it would be through you to staff, but I had also had that the little copes in the middle of Rathdown Park that's currently there and full of all sorts of things in the, in the, in the middle. Somebody once told me that the reason that was preserved was because at the time the park was put in, it was nesting habitat. And I don't know whether this is something we have on record in the town, that there was some species of bird of concern, or whether this was just a matter of they built it in April and there were bird nests there. It was kind of hard to dig, so they just left it. Or, you know, whether that's a consideration that we need to take, take into account, and we start altering this. This copes it all.
Does anyone from staff have a comment on that, or able to comment? Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
Thank you. Just wanted to confirm it wasn't actually a species of note, and it was just general nesting. I think that answers that. And the other one, I think, is actually just coming up, looking at your overall, your number five here, and having the animal control by law come in as low priority. I guess either it would be low priority for you in the parks planning, and I'm just wondering through the chair to staff, whether that was something staff had also suggested be kind of a low priority due to just staff time and the need to get it done, because it seems like something we could easily do without having to come up with further designs that might actually put some of the people who I know expressed concerns about promoting more dog use in parks, that would give them some more clarity around it when they, when they want to call the town.
To answer your first question, this was based on staff and our input. I can't remember exactly where it came on the wash. I think one reason why it's maybe lower down is that there, as far as I'm aware, staff haven't heard a lot of actual issues reported. It's more of a concern of what will happen if, but the nuances of amending the bylaw, I guess, might be of some concern. But I'll let staff, if they have more to say on that.
Your mic, your mic?
Through the Chair to Councillor Duncan. Unfortunately, the dog issue, there's two very divided sides on it, and when everything is kind of covertly done and it's not well-organized, the community evolves and things happen. As soon as you formalize and you start to attract an allure, and if uses goes up, that could send a little bit of a different message in the community. So it's a bit of a balancing act. By going with the approach where you're modifying the bylaw to a little bit more of a care and control, and when you're going to do particular activities or you're allowed to do, that's going to create more bylaw enforcement and maybe some more complaints. So to start off with the bylaw, make a few changes, that might be a good approach to take. See how, see how that fares. And again, if there isn't a lot of public feedback on it, maybe then we can transition into the formal areas from that point.
I'll just add to that by saying that Brian's doing my job for me, but that was kind of the mindset with the, there's a little bit of ambiguity in the language around the off-leash dog areas, and the reason for that is right now it's generally working okay. And what we didn't want to do was establish an off-leash dog area that then attracts the attention of all dog owners to come and contribute to the locals that are using it. And instead, maybe initially amend the bylaw to, you know, effective control, so that at least there is something to enforce if there is an issue. But generally, people can have their dogs off-leash, just they got to be responsible for them essentially. And then in time, as these plans go through, maybe establish an act, you know, adjusting those off-leash dog areas that are identified in the animal control by law. So it might be a phased, you know, a phased approach.
Thank you. Councillor O'Keefe?
Sorry, one more. So going back to Brether for a minute, you mentioned that the park had been unutilized and perhaps because of the irrigation issues there, I believe?
I believe that's one of the issues. Yeah, the irrigation system doesn't work anymore, and there's also drainage issues.
Right. So I guess I'm just wondering, maybe it's more a question for staff, I'm not sure, but, you know, I remember like my kids were playing soccer, there always seemed to be a shortage of space and well-drained fields to play on, and I'm just wondering if we were to address those drainage issues and irrigation issues, where it might be a place where, you know, soccer or baseball could still be played. And I guess what's rolling through my head is that while I appreciate the need for dog owners to have places for their dogs to run, I used to have a dog, but I'd also, you know, put a little bit more emphasis on having open spaces for kids. I know we've got playgrounds, which is sort of a, you know, something for them, but a place for kids to be place for kids to be having open space to kick a ball around or have a game of scrub or something like that, so.
Yeah, just in response to that, um, goes back to the previous issue as well, which is, um, I, in the plan itself, although it says dog area, uh, it doesn't say certified off-leash dog area. So the idea is to keep that open space for people to play with their dogs, which is, seems to be the, the most typical current activity, but leave that open space and leave that baseball diamond so it could be used still for, as a game of scrub or, or, or practice. You could even have a soccer practice there if you wanted. And if the pickleball doesn't go in, then that open space area continues all the way up. Essentially, if the pickleball doesn't go in and the playground doesn't go in for a while, the park remains the same except for hopefully drainage improvements and, and maybe some new plantings along, uh, along the road. Uh, so the open spaces will certainly be preserved. This is if everything goes ahead 20 years down the line, it, you know, but we're still preserving that open space.
Right.
Yeah. And, and I, I'm resistant to the full-on off-leash dog area, like fenced off and all that, just because I think I prefer multifunctional spaces.
Yeah. Thank you.
I've got a couple of, um, comments of, one of them certainly was, as I was looking through, uh, the plans, is there wasn't, uh, anything made for accessibility. There wasn't a playground that was focused on, uh, children or people who need assistance to be able to interact with what we're doing. So that is one thing that, um, is of concern to me. Counselor O'Keefe, uh, certainly noted about the open undefined space, the need for that. And I think that is really important, that we have space that allows natural creativity with whatever happens to be there that particular day, what the wind's blowing in or what someone's left behind, rather than a specified play area. I think there's, we need that in today's world. We're, we're too focused on what is. The other comment is, I really am not in favor of seeing a pickleball court there. I would much rather look at partnerships with, uh, Green Glade and Parkland. I think, uh, your comments are valid, that the infrastructure's there, the, the parking is there, the bathrooms are there. Why build something when we don't have to, uh, from that perspective? Comment about off-leash dog, I think, uh, there is validity in saying that effective control, I think that's, uh, it's certainly something I see up at, um, what's the park just across from Panorama Brook? Anyhow, there's a park up.
Dominion Brook?
Nor, Dominion Brook Park, yes. And, and great sign, it says effective control. And so there is an owner of, onus of responsibility for, for people. And, and I think it works very well because dog owners tend to be then protective about wanting to maintain that. So it's, it's a win-win. One other comment, and that is in general, um, a word out to our staff, is I'm concerned if we start doing irrigation, we're looking for, I understand the need for good grass and good field if there is a particular sport that has to be played there. I see the value in that, but I'm concerned in using water to irrigate a green lawn in the 21st century in the western hemisphere. I don't think that's where we should be going. I think there's other ways of doing that and I would like to reduce our need. And I realize there is a cost thing in, you have to establish planting and it's easier to put in irrigation to do the watering, but there's something in all of that. I think we've got a gem here in Brether Park to have all of that forested area. I would not want to see that to be a biking route, as in the kids playing. We've got a park in North Sanage that provides that element. And I think to have a nice wooded park to be able to walk through, I use it frequently, I would not like to see it as a racetrack or something like that. So, any other comments? Yes, the mayor.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Could we go to the Rathdown slide for, just have some, some small questions on each? So just, um, speaking to, following up on the irrigation, um, points that were made, my question is, is, um, what would be the irrigate, irrigated areas here in reference to the report, the dark green areas?
Uh, if any areas, it would be the, the sort of bright, bright green here. Uh, if we were, if the goal was to establish sort of a more, somewhat more manicured lawn, play area, picnic area and so on, adjacent to all the, uh, amenities. But, uh, I forget, should remember, I forget the exact language in, in the plan, but certainly that'd be something that we worked out in the, the detailed design phase. If, for example, Counselor Fallett's sentiments were, were felt that that could be done without the irrigation and, and that was the way to go, then it certainly would be a necessity per se.
Okay, thank you. Under the phased improvements under number one, detailed design, it says, and the possibility of toilets. Was a, a location, uh, considered in, within the park for those?
The location considered was down adjacent to the sport court and the entryway, somewhere down in there. But that's, that's sort of seen as something that should be taken into account over time, just like some of the other, um, amenities in terms of use and, and further engagement and so on. But yes, next to the playground and the, the sport court.
Okay. Below that, there's the, the column of amenities and, um, and, and there's costing for groups of, um, groups of amenities. And there's ranges there, which is understandable in the, in the circumstances. But things like the, the toilets, uh, aren't actually costed in there as I, as I could see?
Uh, the optional elements are not, but the, the element, other elements are. And, and the, I was asked about the, um, the large plus minus. That's largely due to the fact that this is high level and as we get more detailed, the extent of that playground, the materials, the, how, how hardcore you guys get with the, the feature playground will, will, you know, make that range a, a lot. And also the cost of work right now is particularly high, it may come down and so on, so.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. I'm not familiar with a couple of the lighting terms, and I think they're used in the, um, in the Rest Haven Park. One is, um, daylighting?
Uh, daylighting is with references to the creek, uh, so that there's drainage that all comes through there. So daylight is actually having the daylight come to the creek rather than having, you know, in a culvert underneath the ground.
Oh, so it's still opening it up?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. And then the, it's not called night lighting, but it's called dark lighting?
Dark sky, yeah.
Dark skylighting?
Yeah, so it's essentially lower light, more warm light and more downcast light rather than brighter, whiter, upcast light.
And I think I saw in one of the photographs, those were along paths and, you know, about a meter high.
Yeah, again, that'd be something that you could be, I mean, it could be any height, really. Lower is typically better. And that'd be something that, the cost, again, the plus minus sort of accounted for a little bit in there, but you could go, you could light the whole path if it became, uh, a focus of council to really, um, enhance that part for pedestrians at all, all throughout the year. But it may only be one or two at the entranceway. So that's again, with reference to the ranging cost.
Okay, and so that would be considered an optional that wasn't costed?
Uh, I believe for Rest Haven, um, I believe it, one or two, I think two lights was, was included in the costing.
Okay. Just in the photograph, I saw an entire path lit, but that was just an example of that.
Yeah, that's just, exactly. Yeah, just to give you a sense of things.
If I could go to, um, Rest Haven Park. Just a question about Rest Haven Island, and it talked about replaced trees where needed. And in the diagram, um, we just see trees where the current gazebo is. So maybe it's a question more properly through to staff, does an assessment need to be done? You know, given the weather event that we recently had and again, costing?
Through the Chair to, uh, Mayor McNeil Smith, the, um, certainly the neighbors are wondering when the tree replacement is going to happen. They're also very passionate about where sighting might go. So we've kind of said to them, uh, Parks Master Plan on Rest Haven Island is coming up this year. The urban forest strategy is also on the, on the plate for completion this year. Both of those documents are going to give us some good guidance into what we want to do. Certainly as far as urban forest management, that's a perfect little sample where we could inventory the entire forest, the types of trees there, try to get some ages, look for a few things, do a little bit of a test section of, of how you can really manage a, a small section of urban forest. And then look at a, a replanting strategy. Maybe there's a different selection of trees we might want to put on there based on climate change, different things like that. But certainly the neighbors are, are, are very engaged in, in seeing something happen there. They'd like to see at the bare minimum, the trees replaced that were lost.
Great. Thank you. Uh, and just a couple of quick questions on Brether Park. Again, with regards to pickleball, this will be a question, I, I concur with, uh, I, I don't believe this is the right location for pickleball, but a question through to staff is, we know the, um, uh, the association, if you will, or loose association of pickleball players has advocated for quite some time for, uh, for facilities in, in town. Have, have they come forward suggesting Green Glade or ever, ever coming forward? I haven't heard that.
No, I believe so.
Would there, what, what constraints? Would it just, it would be something to be worked out through the, through the commission, through the, uh, rec, Panorama Recommission?
Through the school district, the lands are leased, uh, from the school district. They own the property and leased to, uh, leased to, uh, Panorama. So, uh, it would between, be between essentially those parties, but, uh...
Okay, well, it's certainly something I can bring up at Panorama Recommission.
Absolutely.
Because there is very large field area, in, in addition to the benefit of having the parking at, at Green Glade and having the washroom, change room facilities, uh, there's a fairly large park area. And, and though I don't frequent it as often as the first two parks we've, other parks we've been discussing, um, it seems a lot of unused area, regularly used area there that, uh, might be suitable. A question in the, um, in the discussion part, it referred to Bike Park as a possibility or a future option for this park. Can you describe what that would be and what sort of space size it might take up or might be recommended?
Uh, so this idea came out from the Parks Master Plan process and we carried it forward as a, one of the draft early options for Breath Hour. Didn't see a lot of support. It didn't see much, uh, opposition either. It just was kind of sitting there. And so we didn't see it justified to come forward. The, the sort of conceptual design that we showed was, um, one section roughly that size out of the forest and then a loop path in the forest and back out. So it, you know, it was mostly on the edge of the field and incorporating part of the forest area. So you could have, uh, different, uh, types of, uh, areas for younger and older kids and in and out of the forest. So see, some people thought it was an amazing idea, but then nobody came, you know, there was no, um, bike group coming forward, uh, like the pickleball to, to vote in support. So I mentioned that as something that who knows in the future, but, uh, not enough support to carry it forward.
Okay, thank you. I'll, I'll wade into the, um, off-leash dog, um, um, discussion and, and in a previous term on council, uh, a group came forward, a group of residents came forward wishing a, um, an off-leash designated area within, uh, within Rathdown Park and it was turned down at the time because of, of other, uh, concerns. And I would support, uh, going to, uh, to amending, uh, bylaws as, as necessary to bring in effective control. I think it's a graduated step, if you will, uh, that we should, uh, that we should approach. And if effective control doesn't work, um, I, I think we can consider a next step. I, I just know a lot of dog walkers, and I'm sure others do, that would really desire an off-leash area. And I appreciate your comment that you would prefer to see spaces multi-use. When you take a look at the park, the size of, uh, of Rathdown, there is a lot of space there. Unfortunately, the area that's being suggested is the least used area of the park. And most of the, having, living in that area, I see most of the dog walkers actually approaching from where the, where the hub is at the, where the playground is. But, but just to comment on effective control. I'd like to just summarize on, on a couple of things. One is congratulations or thank you to, uh, Tevin Pearson and, and your colleagues and also the staff for working together on this. I think the engagement process with the community was tremendous. It was multi-stage, uh, with, uh, sessions actually in the park with an open house at Mary Windspear, with online surveys on two occasions. And, uh, we got lots of useful feedback from that. There were in the hundreds, uh, that responded in, uh, in each of the three parks. So, um, thank you for that process. The, uh, next comment is really to speak to, uh, community expectations for a moment. And when you look at this report, it's outstanding and there's a lot of innovative and I would say comprehensive ideas that really take into different aspects of our community, whether it's urban canopy or dog walks or playground or irrigation or drainage. Uh, so every, uh, things have really been thought through in all of the ideas for this park. In the costing, which I touched on, uh, the costing for each park is between $300,000 and $500,000. And, um, uh, you can see with some of the options, if they were to be approached, we, we would easily get to the higher number, I, I would suggest. And so that's a million and a half dollars. And to put things in perspective, uh, council this year, uh, last month approved a budget for 2019 with some 85 capital projects totaling almost $8 million. So we're talking about, you know, three projects, if you will, in three parks. And, and just to put it in perspective, uh, the staff report does recommend, and I think reasonably so, uh, that this report be received with the comments and, um, taken to the strategic planning process that council and staff will go through in the fall. But then, uh, a similar time, we'll go through the budget process and we can start to look at what the priorities, because we can't implement, while it would be desirable to, you know, spend several months or whatever time it takes to make a complete changeover of the park to get to everything you see in each of these parks, realistically, that can't happen. And the, um, in the report, the timelines, the total timelines really aren't indicated that if we were to spend, if we were to implement all of these good ideas, how long would that take with budget and staff resource constraints? And, um, and a brief discussion with staff, you know, it's, it's, you know, it might be three years, it might be four years, it might be five years. So I just, in terms of community expectations, there's a lot of great ideas here. I think council sees merit of them, but we're going to have to be realistic in what can be implemented in, in the timeline that, uh, that they can be implemented. So thank you again very much to, to you Evan and to, to staff.
Thank you for those comments, uh, Mayor McNeil Smith. And if committee has no further questions, then I would say thank you very much, Mr. Peters. Committee, we've got staff recommendation. Is anybody interested in moving that?
I'll move the staff recommendations. Number one, that the Rathdown, Rest Haven and Brether Park content plans report by Barefoot Consulting dated April 1st, 2019 be received. And two, that staff analyze potential action items from the content plans and bring forward potential projects for consideration as part of annual fall strategic planning and subsequent budget processes.
Do we have a second, or? Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Then I'll call, uh, the question. Oh, sorry. Yes, Counselor Duncan.
I guess I would just say, uh, my final comment would be that I concur with what the mayor said about, about, uh, the budget and that I would prioritize when they begin evaluating, um, what we're going to look at. Those projects that can be done, that the smaller ones, that can be done easily, um, and those that may result in decreased, um, maintenance over time. If there are any plantings they can do that will cut down on mowing later after, you know, three years of watering, you know, in a five-year time span, if that would save money, that those would be the ones to prioritize.
Thank you, Counselor Duncan. I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, motion carries. Thank you. And just before we go on to seven, development and planning, I was remiss in not extending a welcome to Ms. Verhagen. It's nice to have you back again. Thank you. So, uh, committee, we've got under number seven, a development of fire hall parking lot lands, request to consider affordable housing proposal at 9837 Third Street, 2477 Sydney Avenue and 9821 Third Street. And we have a presentation from Mr. Fraser McCall, is it? Or is it Dan Robb? Sorry.
Dan Robbins is my partner, he's sitting right here.
Oh, okay. Welcome. I'll just press the button so that your mic is on.
Really, um, Randy, uh, Randy's report to council on March 20th really covered everything that I'd want to say. And there's a cover letter from my partner, Dan Robbins, dated March 14th, which is Appendix A, that also pretty well covers everything that I'd want to try and say to you. Right now, we have an opportunity with CMHC, they have a special program to encourage a different type of housing. It's affordable rental housing, plus it's got a accessibility component, plus it's got an energy efficiency component. And, um, it's not the end all be all, believe it or not, like any government. And it's not the end-all, be-all, believe it or not, like any government program, you jump through a number of hoops to see if it can work. And I'm sure you've all been through that before, how many times you've been disappointed when something didn't come through. But I think this is a fairly unique program and I think there's a very good chance we can get it. Dan Robins was on the phone with CMHC this afternoon. They did give us another little wall that we kind of ran against in terms of the costs that we face here, including the land component and construction costs, are going to be higher than what they've funded per unit or any other project. So we're being kind of given the good news this afternoon that we'll probably have to put a lot more money into the project, that's equity. But that's what the government does, they cut you in little slices. But there's still a good chance of doing this. Really, what you're going to get out of this is a substantial rental project and you don't have a lot of sites where you can do major rental projects in Sydney. You have a very limited land base. And the units that we're going to be targeting for the most dramatic discount are the two-bedroom den and the three-bedroom units, which are the units that would encourage or make it easier for families, working families to live in Sydney, which is something I know that you would like to encourage. The discount, what it's going to end up costing us on a yearly basis is over $200,000. And really, it's not a real, it's a long-term project for us. It's not a project that's going to make us a lot of money, especially not in the near term. This is more of a long-term hold. And what we're looking at is basically getting a reduction on the taxes and some of the costs upfront that we're going to be paying to you guys. Now, we are paying you a good chunk for the land, but we did get a kind of a kick out of CMHC when Dan was talking to them today. They were going over, well, what can you get from your municipality as a contribution? And they were kind of going through different scenarios, kind of suggesting things. And he said, well, could you get the land donated to you? And I said, I don't think that's going to work in this particular case, Dan. I think we've gone too far down the road on that one. So I'm just saying, it's not, and it is a beauty contest, we are not guaranteed that we're going to get the loan yet. Everything that you guys do helps us in terms of getting the loan, it shows that there's a municipal buy-in to the program and that'll help us as well. Your vacancy rate is below 1%. That should be all that they need to know, but everything else that we do will help, okay? Really, it's that simple. I think Randy's been a great help in making us sound a lot more intelligent than we are. And I appreciate his work and some of your other staff, they've all been tremendous in terms of working with us. It's a very important site in Sydney, you don't have many sites of this kind of profile. So we do want to do a good job and we do want to leave a legacy here. This is something that, if it's done properly, even the people who've been hostile to our project, in five years from now will be talking to us in a much more positive light. Okay? Really, that's it. We're aiming to give the biggest discounts to the largest units and the overall discount will end up costing us well over $200,000 a year. And we've shown even more good faith in that the small building on Second Street, we also are going to make into residential units above the ground floor. So we've added another nine units there. So the total number of units, the unit count in this building is 91 units and you still have a commercial component on the ground floor, which is very dear to us because that animates the street. And that's where you will get tax income over the next 10 years as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. McCall. Committee, any questions? Council Wainwright?
Thank you. So one of the things that wasn't clear in either the staff report or your correspondence is what the criteria might be or who is going to be eligible for these affordable rental units?
Well, I've been in situations like this in the past in Denver, Colorado. And, Dan, you might want to answer, but usually you find out what they're making, their income. It's quite simple. It's simple, you have to get some kind of verification.
I appreciate that. The other example we have in Sydney is the Aranza Workforce Rental Housing Project. And they were very clear upfront that you wouldn't be eligible to rent one of those units unless you were actually working and your household income had to be within a certain range. And that sort of, so they told us upfront what the criteria were going to be. And it was the Victoria Rental Housing Development Society that was going to be managing the applications, screening people, ensuring the criteria were met. So I'm not seeing any of those details in what you're proposing. And that's why I'm looking for that.
But we also have to qualify for this CMHC program. I mean, they're not going, it's not an open checkbook and they do vet everything that we do. But I can give, I will get you the formal, you know, vetting procedure that we'll use and I'll put that in writing for you.
Okay. Because I think that's really a critical thing. Reading the CMHC program, while I can appreciate that the rents have to be below a certain threshold, they're not actually saying anything about you restrict the occupants to people who are actually in need. It's just you're creating some rental units that are below the normal market rate. And I'd be as eligible to rent one of those as somebody who actually needs it.
Not if we're vetting it, like I said we do in Denver.
Okay.
Okay.
So...
In Denver, just to be very clear, and I'm probably going off topic and Dan's going to be grimacing behind me, you couldn't be a student and get a subsidized unit, for example. You had to be a working person and you had to show your income.
So I think, from my perspective, I would need to see what those criteria are and who's going to be overseeing them. So that's...
I'll get that to you.
Definitely critical information.
Council O'Keefe?
So along the same lines as the criteria and the eligibility, I agree, those are important things. And I guess as I look at this, the thing we hear from our community is that we need housing for workforce, workforce housing. So there's people, businesses that are struggling to maintain their businesses because they can't get people to work here, they can't afford to live here. But when I look at this proposal, what I see is that it seems to be targeted mainly to aging baby boomers. So to me, that it looks like we're targeting retired people, which we have a fair number already. I also look at, you know, the calculations, it's kind of confusing, frankly, to understand the A and the B part. But what it looks like is it's based on a median income of about $91,000, the percentages come off of that. And so I'm just thinking that, I don't know how many single young working people there are in our community that would, even with the deductions, be able to have that sort of rent. I guess other thing, in terms of attracting families, that would be great. But when I look at the information from the Devon Group, they're talking about the target demographics want convenience and amenities nearby that don't necessarily require them to drive to. So when I look at that, that doesn't seem to apply to families too much. So the families I know are driving, are usually, both husband and wife are working, they're driving their kids to daycare, they're driving them to soccer practice, to swimming lessons up at Panorama. So I'm struggling a bit with who it's actually targeted to. Is it for families and single people or is it for aging baby boomers?
Well, it depends on the unit. There are single people, but I'll tell you where this all came from in terms of our experience. We have a construction crew that are building houses here in Sydney. And we have lost a number of our younger guys because they couldn't find anywhere to rent and they went home, they went to Alberta. They were living in their car, then they were in a hostel, then they were couch surfing at a friend's house and they gave up and they went home. We've lost a number of people like that. But when you talk about families, I don't know a lot of families right now that can afford two cars. And I'm talking about working people. We deal with a lot of working people who are tenants in some of our buildings and actually people who work for us. And they share a car. Or if the wife's got young kids, she's at home and she's walking them everywhere. Most people can't afford two cars anymore, they really can't. I mean, those days are over. A lot of people that work for us don't even have a license. If they have an N, it's a big deal. They can't even afford one car. So I think a lot of people are sharing a car or they're walking. And it might not be your experience, but younger people don't have a car. A lot of people don't have a car. Or if they do, if it's a couple, they share one car.
So, just a couple other things on the eligibility. So would we have the ability to say that those units would be offered first to individuals who were working in Sydney or North Sanwich? And I guess what, you know, I'm concerned about is that we are a popular destination. As you've mentioned, that you're targeting aging baby boomers and people who want to retire. And so I guess what I would be concerned about is workforce housing is very important. So I would like to see preference given to people who are working here already and would have access to those, rather than people from Alberta or Ontario wanting to move here.
Well, that's the intent and I mean, we can clarify that, absolutely, that's the intent. I listened to the mayor talk to me a while ago about the number of people who can't find a place to live, who work around the airport and the industrial park, for example, they're commuting from Langford, that's just insane. No, absolutely, that was very much a part of what we're talking about here.
Okay. So when Council Wainwright was talking about having established criteria to confirm income, to confirm that we had the appropriate people, you would also add to that list that they would have to provide proof that they were working in the area as well then?
That would be, we would rank them like that, absolutely.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I don't see, you know, the more complicated it gets in terms of a criteria, the harder it is to work with. But those are all common sense items that I totally embrace. They make sense that you give a first preference to people who work and live in the area right now, sure.
You also mentioned that the proposal talks about 10% of units would be accessible. I'm presuming you mean from that, what we call adaptable units for persons with disabilities? Is that...
Well, I've done a number of these in the past. And basically, it's a radically different unit. You know, in terms of the width of the hallways, the width of the door going into the bathroom, it's not simply adding a backing for a grab bar in a shower. It's a lowered countertop in the kitchen, there's a number of things that you have to do. We've done it to the point where a person could have touched a button to open a door with his, you know, with a little pen in his mouth. I mean, so we are going to make these units for, that a handicapped person can use.
And so, maybe a question through the chair to staff. I believe is our, the amount of adaptable units we require, is that 20% for this sort of development?
Yeah, through the chair to Council O'Keefe, it is 20% and that was met when the development was approved.
Oh, okay.
Originally, yeah. So those units are in the building.
Okay. And any idea how many of those would be designated as affordable units?
I'm not sure yet, you know, I'm really not sure. Because that, again, the more, the more you circumscribe it like that, that might be a situation where someone does, as they get older, have a problem. So I don't know, I really don't know about that. We don't know what the market will want, right? We don't know who those people are yet. That we don't know.
I have more, but... Okay, thank you. We've got Council Garnett and then Council Duncan.
Thank you. Couple of thoughts. As far as the Aranza goes, I've seen the initial documentation and it's, they're looking for a household income of $37,000 to $43,000 to qualify for that building. So my greatest concern is the service industry sector, people that work in our community that earn minimum wage or barely above that. So they don't qualify for that building. So the vetting that Peter, as Council Wainwright was speaking about is important in terms of knowing what you're going to use as your parameters. Because I would like to see that be lowered if possible, because there's a big segment of our population that can't find a place to live. And when we do buildings, they can't, they don't meet the criteria because they don't make enough. And they need a place to live as well. So I'm with, along with him, wanting to see what that criteria and the parameters are that you're going to use.
You know, but at a certain point, I understand what you're saying. We're making a significant contribution to affordability. It's very, very hard to find an affordable rental unit. Now you're talking about something that BC Housing has been promising to build you guys for years and it hasn't delivered. I can't do everything, I'm doing everything I can. So at a certain point, an income of $37,000 is hard, it is hard. And I'm not pretending it isn't difficult to find something. But we know people who make slightly more than that and still have a hard time finding a place to live. And when they do find a place, they end up getting rent evicted through a rent eviction type deal and all sorts of games are being played with them. I don't know what the number will be at the lowest point, but I can't, you know, at a certain point, we've got to make it work. Even right now, there's a debt service coverage ratio that we've got to meet to get this financing from CMHC. And if we don't get these items from you guys, we probably won't get the debt service coverage ratio that we need, just to even get this project going. You know, at a certain point, there's no magic. You know, what you're looking for, for really, really low rents, you would need BC Housing to get involved. And so far, they haven't come to the table in Sydney. Several people have worked with them and they've completely bailed. And what the problems always been? When you deal with BC Housing, it's, they say, well, the land cost is too high. Well, I mean, the land cost is a land cost. What are they suggesting, you know? So I'm very, very cynical about what kind of housing you will get like that. It's promised, but it's never delivered. I think we're delivering something really substantial and I think it's a really good step. And I think it'll probably improve your chances of getting other subsidized housing in the future. I think you do need this as a first step. The Aranza project was a great project for you guys and I'm really happy you supported it. But I don't see a lot more coming behind us right now. I really don't.
The other concern I have is with the stratifying the dwelling units at the Land Titles Office that speaks to here and the possibility that in 10 years, these could become market sale condos. I can't see us needing less rentals in 10 years, so I'm a little concerned about that aspect.
Well, this is a very, we're not putting any money in our pockets for the first 10 years of this project, okay? And we have a substantial amount of capital tied up. And 10 years from now, I will not be around and it'll be a project owned by my children and Dan's children. And really, I just have to protect them. I think it'll be a long-term rental project. My children are not interested in being developers, they learn watching me coming home at night, agonizing at 10 o'clock at night, ranting and raving about what's gone on over the day. They don't want it. One of them's a lawyer, one of them's a doctor, another one now wants to be a lawyer. And one of them is going to, is a marketing director for a fragrance company in New York. None of them are here. None of them are going to be developers. I think they'll like the income in 10 years from now when it finally improves and is paid down a little bit. So I think it'll be a long-term rental. But I have to protect them in the future as well. I want to give them the options. But we're planning to hold this for 10 years. This is not a project we could sell tomorrow, it's not a big cash flow project. No investor's going to be excited about this project, especially with the amount of capital that we have tied up.
Okay, thank you.
Council Duncan?
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for the presentation. Before I was on council, I came and sat and spoke before the previous council and about this development and said, this seems like a perfect place to build some affordable housing right in our downtown and why isn't that being considered? and why isn't that being considered? So I'm really happy to now see that that's something that could be possible here. I guess I had comments, the Oranza, of course, being our other affordable housing, is being compared to and is limited to workforce. I'm actually hoping that would not be the case with this one, because even though the Oranza has a waitlist, there's just, you said our vacancy rate is so low, there's so much demand, people are going for it. It's a one and two bedroom, which means families, by definition, almost can't be in our family workforce housing, unless it's a couple with a single child. If they have two children that are the same gender, they can bunk in the one bedroom. If the children are of opposite genders, then if they're receiving any social assistance of any kind, eventually, when the children get too old, they will be legally required to move.
Right.
Because the children are not allowed to share a bedroom. So this is what I've been talking to people, and they've been telling me about, about this development. So a one and two bedroom is really geared towards people without children, the empty nesters, or the people just starting out. And so I think if we have a building that has one and two bedroom, I would like to see, I would rather see this be a building that had a mixture of families that were able to go into the three bedrooms, people with only one child or young children in the two, and then the one bedrooms being able to take in up by people who were not families. And when we went, Counselor O'Keefe and I went in December to a presentation about purpose-built rental, and I did a presentation to council about that, one of the things we were told about the people who build purpose-built rental, as this would be, is that renters demand more amenities within the building and nearby. They demand much less parking because they prefer to be able to access those amenities nearby, and that's what they find. So when you say that you assume that people who would be living in this building would be people who are low income and would not necessarily have cars, that is backed up by the data about people who do live in purpose-built rental. They also find that when they built these buildings, the demographics that moved into them were about one-third millennials, getting established in the phase of life, maybe with kids. Thirty to 40% were like in the divorced or widowed, restarting phase, they called it. And another third were the downsizers looking for the lifestyle freedom of rental. But that was in their luxury rental market, which this wouldn't qualify. But it could certainly qualify for people who are lower income and entering a fixed income phase of life. So I would not enjoy having a workforce limitation, but certainly an income limitation. Yeah, more towards the cars. I know that definitely there are a lot of families that still have two cars. I would say people with families now span more of the gamut, from people who have no car at all, to car share, to single car that share, to two car. And your signal that your family is too wealthy to be talking about moving into this development would be that, yes, they can afford two cars, and part of the reason they have two cars is they're spending thousands of dollars a year sending their kids to extracurricular activities. That would not be the family that we were looking at for this place. So it wouldn't concern me that we did not plan for families that had two cars. This would be, this would be families who currently take the bus everywhere they go. When they need to go to the doctor, they get on the bus and go for an hour and a half. So I guess the only question that I, the only thing that I would hold for additional questions would be what Counselor Wainwright has already requested, which would be to actually see what those income criteria would be, and whether they do in fact require for this CMHC grant requirements about whether or not people work or not, because I feel that would be a flag for this building. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for those comments, Counselor Duncan. Counselor O'Keefe, he still had another question?
Okay, sure. Okay. Oh. So just a couple things of clarifying. So in the document, in regards to the financing, it says that the CMHC loan covers up to 100% loan for the residential space. So would that apply to all 91 residential units?
No.
Or just the ones?
That was, that's what, up to what they would do.
Okay.
It's going to be more like 70%. That's what they've told us. So it's a substantial reduction. They're not giving us anywhere near the number they talk about in this document.
Okay.
That's what I'm saying. There's a huge capital contribution. And when you work out the return on that capital contribution, it's ridiculous. It's very, very, very low.
And on the, so in terms of the development cost charges and tax exemption, would that, are you asking for that just for the whole project, or on all of the residential units, or just on the ones that would be?
On the residential units, we figured out if we got that on just, on the residential units, all of them, it will help us get to that debt service coverage ratio that they want. And it will also, so basically, that and the reduced interest rate that they're offering will get us to the number that'll make the project financially feasible. Not a great project, but doable.
Okay. Just maybe a question to, through to staff. I'm just, with the Oranza, did, was the deduction based that the town gave, was that based on all of the units, or just the units that were deemed to be affordable workforce housing?
The tax exemption was for all the residential units, not for the commercial. The fee waiver was for the entire thing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Keefe. Mayor McNeil Smith?
Thank you. You know, council, when working through its strategic plan, was very clear in that on the housing issue, we are very much in desire of perpetual rentals, as you've alluded to, what our vacancy rate is below 1%. We very much want and appreciate the need for perpetual rentals in the community. And the second part to that is, where possible, we would like to see more affordable. So I think there's two, there's something to distinguish there between having perpetual rentals and having rentals that are affordable. And of course, the most desirable would be to have affordable rentals. On the perpetual side, it's been mentioned that, and in your information to us, it's clear that you will be strata-ing the units when you construct. And we understand the requirements that you're wishing to meet for the CMHC is that you have to keep them rentals for 10 years. But it is a concern for myself, and I think for my colleagues, that what happens 10 years out. And I've appreciated that, you know, the project may be passed on at that time, but it will still remain a concern for council to see 45 rental units, 45 affordable rental units strata'd and sold. And so in discussing it with staff and my colleagues, we asked ourselves, you know, what options, are there options available to have some protection such that in 10 years' time, we would have to revisit it? And one of those would be to rezone if there was 45 rental units, 45 affordable rental units. If council, if the town was to rezone those as rental, then in 10 years' time, the owner of the project would have to come forward seeking a rezoning request from council to take them from rentals to strata. So we appreciate that you can't just strata part of the building. You would have to strata it all now. But one of the other options might be, and we understand this might be possible, is to actually strata, as a single strata, the block of 45 units. And so again, that would be a decision for the town to make in 10 years, whether it would allow the subdivision. Do you have any comment or any experience in that sort of?
You know, honestly, even in a lot of other areas where they encourage rental housing to be built, they allow a timeline in there, because it helps make the project work. A lot of these cases, it still continues as a rental. But when you say in perpetuity, that's forever. That is something that finance people don't understand. They consider that a limitation. I'm talking about, not for CMHC, I'm talking about for our money, okay? I think if you get 10 years of a rental, and it works out well, it'll probably continue as a rental. But there is no guarantee. To try and circumscribe it will probably make the project, well, it won't be feasible, it just won't work. You know, we're not going to attract the capital. We've got very good long-term partners, but I can't tell them it's forever. That would be, they'll say, Fraser, there's another project for us.
But if, correct me if I'm wrong, but what you're saying is, is that the project is not feasible unless you have the option to sell them, to sell them as strata condos in 10 years' time?
No, not necessarily. But they don't want to be tied in. They don't want to be locked in. It's like, no one wants to be locked in. Even if the project turns out to be very feasible, which is what we're gambling it will be, and it will work very well as a rental, no one wants to be locked in forever. It just, it's just not the way life works in general.
Okay. Well, what I was suggesting, I don't think is a lock-in forever, because if it was rezoned or strata'd, as I suggested, then the owner of the project at the time could come forward and, you know, council could give it reasonable consideration.
But you're, again, you're at the whim of council of that time, in 10 years, or whenever that would be. I couldn't sell that to our partners in this project. I just couldn't. I don't think they'll do it.
Okay. We appreciate the discussion. And as I said-
No, I appreciate you asking.
We are interested in rental units and affordable rental units in our community. Going to, and again, I appreciate the detailed calculations you've provided. We have the CMHC agreement, or CMHC program details. But it speaks to a calculation based on median income. And so it's more affordable to people if they have to spend less their income on it. But then you have to say, what is the cost of the resident, of what is the rental cost for the different units? And so in the staff report, it indicates that currently in the victorious central metropolitan area, a bachelor average is $926, a one-bedroom is $1,076, two-bedroom at $1,400, and a three-bedroom $1,600. What we can't, what we can't tell or calculate from what you've said is, while you will be providing $200,000 worth of reduced rent, is how much will the rents be below those figures of current costs to people who have to rent? We appreciate that there may be, you know, there's some calculation based on income, but in practicality, what are they going to be spending less in the rent?
Well, but that's why they have a formula. But we're also talking about a project that's going to take two years to build, and those rental numbers will be based on, you know, what's happening in two years. But there is a strict formula. CMHC aren't idiots. They, at least they feel like they're tying us in, or they're locking us into certain numbers. Otherwise, they wouldn't give us the money at these low interest rates. They have, they're doing their own policing of us as well, right? But I mean, they base it on, not on a fixed number right now, they base it on what the figures come in on the market. That's what it's all about here right now. And I'll tell you right now, you're losing rental units in Sydney right now, whether you realize it or not. There's a number of buildings that are getting taken down for redevelopment. You've got a net loss of rental properties in Sydney as of next year.
We do appreciate that. We see the projects come before council. But I hope you appreciate that if we know what the current costs are, this information is tracked in the Greater Victoria region, whether you're using current dollars or whether you're using future dollars, I think council needs to have some indication of what the affordability is based on current rents, not just a calculation on incomes.
And you want to talk to that?
Well, it's a reduction in the appraised market rent. So I saw those numbers that you just quoted. I think one way to, I feel those are inaccurate, but that's irrelevant. What it's based on is what-
Could you just tap to the mic, so it'll be on the tape, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
What CMHC does is look at the appraised value of the market for that rental unit, and then there's a reduction from that. So the numbers that you just quoted seem awfully low to me, but I'm not an expert. But it's really irrelevant anyways, because when, if the market rent for the three-bedroom unit is $2,800 a month, we will be reducing it, taking that $200,000 and spreading it across units. So we've decided to make the family units the most affordable. So we're going to take that $200,000 and reduce all the three bedrooms and a portion of the-
And the two-bedroom?
Yeah, not 100% of the two-bedroom in 10, but all of the three-bedroom and a portion of those. So your question's a difficult one, because A, I think those numbers are inaccurate, but it doesn't really matter anyways. It's two years from now. What's the market value of that unit? And then reducing that market level by a percentage of what we've decided is the family units. Does that make sense, or?
No, it does. But when you say market value of the unit, if it's a rental unit, the market value is what the rent is for that unit. So there is, there is a-
So an appraisal?
I understand there may be some concern about whatever these numbers are, but there is a market value for a three-bedroom unit today.
Absolutely. We could find out, we can get an appraisal for that building, and we can, and it will, absolutely, it's underway actually, as we speak, an appraisal for the building, and there'll be a number for each unit.
But I'm not, sorry, I'm just, sorry to interrupt, but I'm not sure how an appraisal comes into, into the calculation.
Well, how else would you determine the market value?
An appraisal to determine what they're getting for rent.
Like, I can tell you what the market value is, and that number you just quoted could be the, but I think what you need is a third-party appraiser to say, this is the market value of that unit, no?
Well, if I'm a renter, and I want to rent a unit, I'm going to go and look at five units. And one might be $2,000, one might be $1,500, one might be $1,000. And so I have to, you know, I have to determine what's affordable. I'm not taking into account some appraised value of the unit. I'm dealing in the marketplace. And so-
Well, the appraisal is a reflection of the marketplace. Like, I'm sorry, I'm just confused.
An appraisal of the-
Like, an appraisal on a house, that you're going to, if you were going to go buy a house.
I know, but we're not buying. We're renting.
No, I know. Let me finish. Let me finish. If you were going to buy a house, the bank would request that you get an appraisal on that house to finance it.
Okay.
The same appraisal's done on rental buildings every day. Like, that's how the bank finances a rental building. So the same appraisal that you would get to buy can be done for the rental.
The appraiser canvases the market. He talks to property managers and rental agents and says, what is the Robert's house getting per month on a two-bedroom, a three-bedroom, a one-bedroom? He finds out what Sussex Place is getting per month. He gets all of that, and he puts it in a chart, and he says, this is the average per square foot for a rental of a certain size. They usually base it on a rental rate per square foot. And they canvass the market.
It's a reflection of the market, like the appraised value.
Okay, I understand.
Okay.
I do understand. Thank you for that.
Yeah, so that's what it would be based on, on that number.
Okay. Thank you for the answers.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Mr. Bear. If I can just come in, I fully appreciate, Mr. McCall, your needs to protect your investment and your project. And I don't doubt for a moment that you don't understand that we are trying to protect our community here. We have a wide range of needs in affordability, and so the term is fairly loose, which is why we were asking for some definition and some parameters, so that we understand who this market, who this demographic is that you're going to provide in this plan. It was an interesting concept that the mayor brought up with stratifying the rentals, the rental units, and leaving them in, as rentals, zoning them as rentals. You did mention that your family was probably going to be looking at receiving income from this and looking at this long-term. So when we come along and say that we'd like to look at that as being a rental long-term as well, we're trying to make sure that we get what our community needs. And we, and as you pointed out yourself, we're losing rental stock. We're losing a wide variety of rental stock. Counselor Wainwright made a good point, when he said, we need to ensure that someone who is making perhaps $150,000 isn't going to come in and rent a unit that is classed affordable and would be by design for someone else. We want to ensure that the people who need that affordability are able to have it. So I think we've got a lot to think about, and committee's got a lot to go through. Are there any further questions for Mr. McCall?
I'll just add my comment to the mayor's in regards to the 10-year term, because I believe with Oranza, like you say, we- I believe with the Oranza, like you say, we provided considerable concessions, but that was for... In perpetuity. And why... I understand your reservations. I just want to toss it out there.
But I'm sorry, the Oranza, is it affordable in perpetuity, or is it rental in perpetuity? You know? Okay, so-
Just if I can respond, yeah. So, yeah, fifty percent of the units are affordable in perpetuity.
Okay.
If I could. I was hoping that we would, you know, go through our questions for the proponents, and then the proponent could sit down, and we could have our debate and discussion. And we're actually having a debate with a proponent.
You're right.
And I don't want to do that. I would like to have a discussion with my colleagues, and I kind of think we're done asking questions. I could be wrong.
Mr. Wainwright, I'd like to leave with one comment. This CMHC funding, this mortgage is for ten years, okay? And ten years from now, that mortgage is up. So if we're not careful, if everything is still great in the world, it will still continue as a rental. If interest rates change dramatically, and we can't get refinancing on this project as it is at that time, as an affordable rental, that could change things. That could put us in a huge bind. That's something you need to understand in terms of the finances of a project. It's a ten-year loan. The amortization is longer, but it's a ten-year loan. I could end up absolutely ruining my children's future. They could be destitute if things turn the wrong way. I need the flexibility. You have to decide whether you want a ten-year rental. And if it's beyond that, wonderful, but I'm not promising it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCall. Appreciate your time. Yes, Council Wainwright?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. So I asked about the criteria for eligibility for these, and I think that one is really a very key point for us. One of the things I'm really very hesitant about is the magnitude of the ask. And the comparison with the Oranza, I see as an apples and oranges kind of thing, because the Oranza was housing agreement registered on title, affordable rentals in perpetuity. And, you know, the town put a certain amount of money per unit to essentially guarantee that in perpetuity. Here, we've got... We're being asked for a package of financial incentives for a certain number of units for ten years, with no guarantees of anything beyond that. And what I'd like to do, actually, is just focus on the magnitude of the ask. So we're being asked to waive the building permit fees, and the staff report says, estimates a hundred and fifty to two-hundred thousand for that. And that depends on exactly what the, you know, design, the plans that are submitted. So the best they can do is arrange. We're being asked to waive development cost charge. Our park's an open space one. Again, they're estimating it's around twenty-four thousand. And then we're being asked to waive the property taxes on the residential component, and our understanding is there's ninety-one residential units in this. And staff aren't in a position to give us a good estimate on what the magnitude of that property tax exemption is, without actually getting more details of, you know, the plans and what the fixtures are going to be like, and all that kind of stuff. But when I asked the question, staff suggested that it would be conservatively a hundred thousand a year, that we'd be waiving in property taxes. So if I pick the hundred and fifty thousand for the building permit, that's the low land, and I split that over ten years, so that's fifteen thousand a year. The twenty-four thousand for the development cost charge, divided by ten, that's two-point four thousand a year. And a hundred thousand a year in taxes, that comes up to a hundred and seventeen-point four thousand dollars a year for, and I'm going to say roughly fifty units, which means we're being asked to put around twenty-four hundred dollars a year per unit. And that's a pretty big number, because what went through my mind is, why wouldn't we just give fifty families a hundred bucks a month towards the rent? That's actually cheaper for us. In fact, we could give a hundred families a hundred bucks a month and be on the same order of magnitude. And at the end of the day, I've got to see the details of exactly what's being proposed. So I need to see what those criteria are for who's going to be eligible for these units. That's obviously a key piece. I think I really need to see the financials on this, because basically, I need to be convinced that we actually need to put money into it to make it work. I can't see myself supporting it, if I'm not convinced that's the case. And at the end of the day, I think I'm still going to be weighing it against the amount of money per unit that's going into it. If it was not just ten years only, if I could see that, if it was in perpetuity, the math would come out differently. But when it's ten years only, that's the way the math looks to me, I have to say. So I'm quite supportive of affordable housing, but I'm not sure I'm going to be supportive of the proposal that's put in front of us. And I just need to see more details to convince me.
Thank you, Council Wainwright. Mayor McNeil Smith?
Thank you. On the same topic, I don't... I'm not going to consider the magnitude of the support now, because we'll be waiting for additional information, and I think it will be more relevant once we have that information. But we do have the Oranza figures before us, and the town gave six hundred thousand, four thousand dollars short of six hundred thousand dollars in support to the Oranza for twenty-nine affordable units. That was a ten-year tax exemption. And four hundred and fifty-four thousand of that six hundred thousand was the ten-year tax exemption. So we've only provided support to those units on a tax exemption for ten years. We haven't provided the tax support in perpetuity, or the six hundred thousand we provided is not providing support in perpetuity. In ten years' time, we'll have to decide on a figure much larger than four hundred and fifty-four thousand, if we want to maintain those twenty-nine units as affordable, if we want to continue to provide that support. But again, I'm not concerned with the actual amounts now. I think once we have more information from the proponent in terms of what costs are necessary from the town to actually make the project financially viable, we'll be able to make a better consideration. Thank you.
Any further comments from the committee? Then we've got a recommendation, and is someone going to jump and look at the recommendation that's in front of us, or have any recommendations beyond that? Council Wainwright?
Thank you, Chair. I think I'd like to try to approach this as separate recommendations than all in one.
Thank you.
And the first recommendation in the staff report is that council support in principle the affordable rental housing proposal, as described in the letter from Mr. Dan Robbins, dated March fourteenth, twenty nineteen. And I'm comfortable with a motion that we support in principle affordable rental housing as part of that project. However, the letter actually describes the financial contributions, and I do not want in any way to indicate support in principle of those at this time. So the motion I'm going to put forward is that council support in principle affordable rental housing as a component of that project.
Do we have... Thank you. We have mover and a seconder. Any discussion? Then I'll call the question. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
Second one, I'm going to move as presented, that the developer confirm in writing that the affordable rental housing proposal in no way impacts the timing of the August first, twenty nineteen, closing date as noted in the contract to purchase and sale.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Motion carries.
Continuing. The next recommendation is requesting essentially financials. I'd like to modify that by including the requirement to provide details of the eligibility criteria. So I'll move that prior to consideration of the request for town support, ten-year tax exemption for the residential component, and waiving of all remaining development-related fees, the developer provides staff with a detailed development pro forma that includes the potential CMHC financing component and ten-year rental term, and provides details of the criteria for eligibility for the non-market rental units, and details of who will be overseeing the eligibility of applicants.
Second.
Mover and seconder. Comments, questions?
I guess, did staff catch that?
We're good? Okay. Then I'll call the question. All in favor? Motion carries.
And then finally, I'll move that once staff have received sufficient detailed information from the developer, they report back to council with recommendations regarding the developer's request for town support.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Then I'll call the question. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Council Wainwright. That concludes seven A. We now... Thank you very much, Mr. McCall, Mr. Robbins. We now go to seven B, which is developed variance permit application under DV one zero zero two eight one, at two-three-four Orchard Avenue, to increase lot coverage and reduce interior side setbacks to retroactively legalize accessory structure. We have a presentation by Michael Gresham, property owner.
Well, I feel absolutely two submissions is kind of a small thing here. I made a few notes. I'm not very good at speaking like this, but I'll try my best. I want to thank you all for considering the application for the variance to allow us to keep our small shed. I would like to start by saying, first of all, although the home is very comfortable to us, unfortunately, there was no storage. And I'll explain that. Because you have a garage, and it says, the only place we could consider storing items would be actually in our garage. I even was looking before I came here at our water tank is enclosed under the stairs, and it's so big, I mean, there wasn't even room there to put anything in. Anyway, although I felt that really if anyone who would call a garage storage room is mistaken. If the garage had two large swing doors and said storage, that would be then another matter. Of course, we'd have to obviously park outside, because we wouldn't have a place for parking However, in the garage, I have had two lots of shelving and placed a bracket to hang one of the bikes. We also sold our SUV last year and purchased a small car to fit in the garage. Unfortunately, it is now too awkward to get into the car with the bike hanging next to the driver's door. Now the bike is placed behind the car and has to be moved outside each time to be able to get out, get the car out. And going onto our shed, our small shed allows us to keep special items that we need from time to time. And of course, everything is also there, nice and dry. At this time, the shed is so full that I have to keep a lawnmower, a wheelbarrow stored alongside the house. Even the small attic in the shed is full. I should also... I don't have a lot here, but I sure should like to point out the following, which is in the discussion part of a submission presented by the planners. And it says at the first part, where it says, "The nature of small lot, single-family development." It's in there, and it does say, and I agree with this, "The town's OCP small lot development prioritizes the importance of functional indoor space, including storage space." Again, there was no storage space. I'm thinking that I realize that the developer had a variance at that time. We know that now. It didn't at the time, but I just wonder, maybe that five-point-seven percent variance he got might have been put towards more storage, because the small house that we have.
If I could just interrupt for a moment, Mr. Gresham?
Yes.
Committee has the information of all of what's going on in front of them. And your opportunity right now is if there is something else that you can add to this that will help us in our decision-making. If there's something new that you've got, something additional that your presence here would be wonderful. We've also got the opportunity to ask you questions. Do you feel that... I don't want to derail you, but I also want to make best use here of your time.
Right. Well, I felt it was important to bring a few things out that was given to you that I didn't agree with, and I thought that would be helpful in my case.
Okay.
And so, just to go back, you know, we purchased a house in two thousand and sixteen, and of course, we're eager to find a suitable house in Sydney. And my wife had to actually sleep in our vehicle in order to make an offer on the house. I mean, it was that critical at that time. I mean, there was really nothing here that we could find affordable and within city limits that we really decided to be in. So at that time, by the time we realized the storage problem, we were not overly worried. We felt we should be able to build a small storage shed without much bother. Again, simply because we had done this before, but we were under the impression that we could build it, simply because it was small enough. We... In our other location, it was, I think, under a hundred square feet was okay without a permit. So of course, we went ahead. However, we did talk to the neighbors, make sure that they were okay with it. We did do that much, anyway. So really, there's not much more. It's just that, again, it says in here about the opinion of the staff, saying that the shed would not be beneficial. Well, that may be their opinion. Well, that may be their opinion, we, we certainly think it was beneficial, or is beneficial. And the last thing, the last item I have here is that the, they mentioned altering the patio, which we didn't do, that's still the same as it was. And they also mentioned that Norway maple, from my understanding, it's not Norway maple, it's Japanese maple, and it's doing quite well, so. That's all I have, really.
Okay, thank you. Committee, do you have any questions for the gentleman? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much, Mr. Gresham.
All right, thank you.
Committee, you have the report and the recommendation, does anybody wish to move?
I'll do it.
Counsel Wyandotte.
I'll move that the application be denied.
Second or?
Second.
Discussion? Counsel Wyandotte, Counsel Duncan?
Okay, so for the benefit of the audience, this application came forward to the previous council, and the previous council denied it, and this appears to be exactly the same application that was turned down before. The property in question already has a variance granted for lot coverage. The zoning allows 35%, it was increased to 40.7%, and this is a request to go beyond that. The accessory building when it was constructed was also closer to the interior side lot line than is permitted for the setbacks. It, basically, it, it's already more than our OCP anticipates for small lot development in that area, and that was the case at the time the, the property was up for sale, and an accessory building was not permitted, so the purchaser simply did not do due diligence in evaluating the property at the time of purchase. I'm sympathetic for the needs for storage space, and I'd note that there are commercial self-storage available in Sydney, and other property owners that find the need for additional storage take advantage of that kind of thing.
Thank you, Counsel Duncan.
Thank you, Chair. I, I had noted that this one had gone to council before and was denied, six to one vote, I believe, and so I also, but I'd wanted to take the time to grapple with it myself to think about whether this was a case of we were allowing changes and variances to be made, but that we're still allowing homes that were really not functional to be built, and then denying further variances that were preventing those, those homes from, from being functional, like, were, were we thinking very clearly about how this was going through? But in thinking about this, I, I believe much of what was addressed by staff in the letter is when people move into a home like this, this, this was, well, it's, it is not home, it's four bedrooms, and yet it is the size of something that one is expecting downsizers to be buying, and, and clearly would be buying. That when, when one buys a home, you have to eventually scale your life to it, scale, scale your stuff to it, especially after we just had a conversation about renters, and we know, you know, when you're a renter, sometimes you just have to purge because that's what you've got, and, and the same thing is when we buy a house, and this house has a very small yard. I, I have a yard about the size of this person's lot, and I think I have less garden tools than he mentions that are in that shed. So while council can't, you know, mandate what people feel they need and what stuff they feel they need to have, we also know that if somebody is building a house, they presume that they're going to find a purchaser for it, and if people are still purchasing it, they're getting the market signal that tells them people accept that house, and if these houses are in fact not having enough storage and people can't maintain their property because they can't store enough tools on it, then these houses should be sitting vacant on the market, and the builders should be getting that signal, rather than council then going back and reapproving things that are being built on it. So for these reasons, I was going to concur with the previous decision.
Thank you, Counsel Duncan, Counsel Garnett?
Thank you, Chair. Through you to staff, I noted it says here in May 2017, staff became aware, can you tell me how they became aware? Was it a complaint, or did somebody just see it driving by, or?
Through the chair to Counsel Garnett, yes, it was driving by, on, in the course of another inspection.
Yeah, I think this is a, this is a product of densification and putting more homes on a lot, on lots. My own neighborhood, same situation, has arisen with smaller homes, and the family moves in, and they don't use their carport, they, it's a storage facility because the family simply doesn't have enough room, and the house is too small, so. But then again, you, you buy the house knowing that going in, and, and yeah, as Counsel Duncan mentioned, you sort of alter your life to, to the space you're now having to live in, and I do feel for them, that not having enough storage, and I, I did drive by and see, and it's, it's, yeah, I can understand why staff is concerned, it's, it's right at the fence. And the fact that previous councils and previous staff has said that it needs to come down, and it hasn't, it troubles me because, you know, you want to go by what we're dictated by our, our town, so for those reasons, I, I will concur with the two previous speakers and deny the request.
Thank you. I'll just make a comment, for me, I looked at this and, you know, I appreciate that the, the individual spoke with his neighbors, that's, that's wonderful, a quick call to the town to understand what the rules and regulations was missing, he was then eventually notified by the town of what the rules and regulations were, was given direction what to do, and again, chose to bypass that and push the envelope, was given direction from the previous council that no variance wasn't approved, and is coming back to the new council and even states that he was doing that. It's sort of like if mommy doesn't give you the right answer, you go to daddy, and this, while I understand the plight of more things than square footage, you had your answer, and here you are again. So if there isn't any further discussion, I'm going to call the question, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you. That brings us to seven C, which is signed proposal for Artsy Gallery Development variance permit application number DV 100271 at Talista Park to install new sign and request a variance to allow for non-permitted sign type to be installed. We have a staff report.
I'll move that Artsy Community Arts Council be authorized to install the proposed sign by law compliant signage on the subject property located at 9565 Fifth Street, that owners and tenants in occupational property within 75 meters, 246 feet of 9565 Fifth Street be notified regarding development variance permit application number DV 100271 to allow for six light pole banners to be placed on the subject property, and that any written correspondence received be forwarded to council at the time of consideration of approval of the variance.
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel McNeil Smith?
I'm going to oppose this motion for, for one reason. I'll, I'll mention something that I went by the art center today, and the, and the signage is already up, and that shouldn't be the case, but that's not why I'm opposed to it. I can realize, I can appreciate that the Arts Council was a little over enthusiastic and, and, and put it up before process was complete. But the reason is, is that the signage is to serve a purpose on the building, and I think, I'm not sure that it serves its purpose as intended, but I also think there's a visual clutter aspect. If, if you look on the south side of the building, they're putting five signs, or they have five signs up, two of them are eight foot wide, there's repetition, and then they want to put two five-foot banners in the parking lot just in front of the center with a bunch of different messages. I think there needs to be one sign that says art gallery, because that's what it is. And in the, in the letter to us, the Arts Council indicates that they have approximately 200 visitors to the center a week, many of them tourists, and it's those people that we need to commute to. I think any resident who's been here a period of time will know the usage of the building. I don't particularly know where the sign is on the grocery store that I, that I shop at, but, so it's, it's, it's for that reason that I'd, that I'll be opposed to this. I, I do believe it deserves signage, but I don't think it's appropriate in this case.
Thank you, Counsel Duncan.
Thank you, Chair. I feel uncomfortable with the light banners aspect of this. The other signs on the building, I have no comment there, the art people, if they think it looks good, I will go with what they say, and, and they have the lease of that building. I feel if the signs comply with the bylaw, that's okay. But the light poles, I feel a little squicked about, and I'm still a little uncertain because they have the lease of the building, but this parking lot is still for the park itself. This is not Artsy's parking lot. People who go to Artsy use it, but so do other people as well. And same with the other ones along the park, while they may be decorative, again, it's not Artsy's park, it's Talista Park, which is a multi-use park, and I kind of wonder about Artsy seeming to be able to brand an entire public park. And on the one hand, I think maybe light poles banners would be attractive, I, and as this recommendation is worded right now, it doesn't preclude other organizations being able to make banners at a later date and then put their banners in the park, and so some of our other town-funded organizations might be able to get the same advertising that Artsy is proposing. So, I basically came with no idea what I was going to vote on that one. But, yeah, so I wanted to get the beat of how the rest of council felt about, about the light pole banners, and whether we should separate out that recommendation, or whether we could carry that one forward with a, the ability to allow other organizations, like maybe the Shaw Ocean Discovery Center would like to get some advertising of a light pole banner one year, and if we, if we start allowing this, so.
Thank you, Counsel Duncan. I'm just going to ask staff to weigh in on some of the comments from Counsel Duncan regarding the light poles being used promoting an organization. How does that, does that differ from the signs that we put up in the summertime, the banners on Beacon Avenue? Is there a difference there?
I'll have a go at this. I think the main, I think the main difference is, Counsel Fallon, is that these banners are actually advertising and promoting a specific organization, the banners that are on Beacon Avenue, as far as I know, I don't think they've ever promoted or advertised a specific organization or business, et cetera. So I think that's the principal distinction. I guess it's.
They do have the names of the sponsors.
Oh, I see, I see, yeah. That was a while back, but they don't do that now, that's right, yeah, so they, yeah, so they don't do that now, but I guess it was done a number of years ago. I think it's, it's, it's obvious that the park area itself isn't part of the lease area, that is outside the scope, so it's a, it's a, I guess, a bit of a, sort of a philosophical question in terms of whether or not we want to go down that road, and Counsel Duncan raises a good point. I don't know, it's a, it's an interesting, it's an interesting question for sure.
Okay.
I don't know if Cory has anything he wants to add, but, no, you're good, he's good.
Thank you, Mr. Humble. Okay, I've got Counsel Garnett, and Wyandotte, and O'Keefe then.
I appreciate the need to advertise, but just looking at it, it does seem just a tad excessive. I mean, I'm looking at the picture, and there's like signs everywhere, and, well, there's six, isn't there? There's actually six, are there not six signs, or six signs, right? I got six, I got six, anyway, A, B, C, D, E, F, and then you've got the pole signs as well, I'm not talking about pole signs, the actual signs on the building. I just, it's a lot of signs, and if it was scaled back, I might be more willing to, to go along with it, but it just, it just seems like, for lack of a better word, overkill, and, yeah, that's my take on it.
Thank you. Counsel Wyandotte?
I was just going to say I'm happy to consider the two parts of the motion separately.
Okay, second or?
Second.
Okay, so we're going to separate points one and two, the first and the second. Counsel O'Keefe, did you have a comment?
Yes, like Counsel Garnett, I felt it's a bit, bit much in terms of signage. I hadn't thought about the light poles, but now that you mention it, I think, yeah, I have an issue with that as well. So as things are, I don't think I would vote for the motion. I prefer to see them come back with a scaled, scaled down version.
Thank you. I'm a strong supporter of the arts, I, I love our arts community, I think on this one. I am disappointed that the signs went up before the authorization was given, and I'm going to concur with the, the banners, I think it is overmuch. So any further comment? Counsel Wyandotte?
Thank you. I could, so my understanding is that with the exception of the banners, all of the signs are assigned by law compliant.
Yes.
So the question through you to staff is, is the reason that council needs to authorize this solely because we're the ones leasing the property to them?
Through the, through the, the chair, that is correct.
So my understanding then is that if this was leased from somebody else, we wouldn't be having to authorize it, and the signed by law would let them do all of this, and I can think of other properties in Sydney that have signs that I'm not particularly attracted to, but they're compliant with the signed by law, and I would, personally, I'm going to vote for it because I have trouble denying something that is permitted by the signed by law just because in this case I've got a chance to say no. The banners on the lights is a different story, and I'm, I appreciate the comments that are being made, so that one I'm, I am rethinking, and I can see myself voting against it. But the first one, it's compliant with our signed by law, if we've got a problem, maybe we should modify the by law.
Any further comments? Counsel O'Keefe?
Well, I guess what I would say in response to that is, yes, maybe we should modify the signed by law, however, if, if, if we do have the, the capacity to, to say no, if we don't like it, I think we should still be able to do that, and maybe we need to look at this signed by law later, but if, if we can legally do that, I, and if we don't like it.
Mr. Newcomb?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think I'm going to have to admit to a miss on staff's part here, I don't believe it is signed by, by law compliant. Section 7.3 of the signed by law reads, "One sign of each sign type is permitted per establishment to a maximum of three signs, sign types in total." So they do have more than one sign type for fascia signs, so that's an oversight on staff's part, for which I apologize. I should also add that this is a scaled down version of their original proposal, but we're happy to go back with, to them, correct this error, and bring back a reduced, perhaps, version of signage for the property.
Thank you, Mr. Newcomb. Counsel Wyandotte?
If it's acceptable with second or, I'd like to withdraw both motions and just refer this back to staff.
Okay, any further discussion? Then I'll call, call the question, all those in favor? Sorry, referring back to staff.
Referring it back to staff.
So, okay, the motion is to refer back to staff, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And as there's nothing else on the agenda, we are adjourned.
Move adjournment?
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.